Start with the information items so that Executive Vice Chancellor Batista can present and then join the Finance and Administration Committee meetings. Item number three, A, CUNY Athletic Conference or CUNYAC Quarterly Report. I call on EVC, Hector Batista, interim Commissioner Carl Christian, and Chief of Staff and Senior Policy Advisor, Executive Vice Chancellor Jerry Thompson, to present on this item.
Thank you Chair. Before I turn it over to Carl Christian for the interim commission report, I want to give an update on behalf of the University Athletic Council, which I now serve as acting chair. We will hire, one of the things that we're in the process of doing, we're in the process of conducting a competitive bit to hire someone, a third party, to run the conference. Administer the operation of the conference, support and serve CUNY members and athletes, formalize the conference by really revising the bylaws, policies, and membership agreements, develop a plan to grow the membership. This will begin to position the CUNYAC as an independent conference to better serve members of the campus and allow the conference to expand its membership, ensuring the continued viability of the conference. I think that, you know, just from sort of my perspective, you know, as I was given this assignment by the chancellor, really what, as I mentioned to you last year, you know, we did an assessment of the CUNYAC and frankly, the assessment revealed that, you know, there were a lot of things within CUNYAC that just was not within the NCAA sort of best practices. And so, this really begins to get us in the direction of assuring that our athletic conference, it has nothing to do with how the athletic department is run at the campus, nothing to do with, it's just strictly to run the conference, set up the games, make sure we have referees, make sure we have the fields, make sure that we have a schedule. That's strictly what this, what this third party, and eventually, we're going to move this to what every best practice is nationwide, which is to really create an independent entity, sort of a 501(c)(3) that will manage and run the operation of the conference. So this is one step and eventually, it's going to move us in another direction. And lastly, what I will also say is that by doing this, we could then assure and begin to address some of the challenges that the conference is dealing with, which really has to do with making sure that we have enough team to really constitute a conference. And I, as you know, with all the challenges financially and otherwise, some of our colleges I have, and it is getting harder and harder in some campuses to really sustain an active athletic program. And what we're hoping this will allow us to do is really to be able to use this entity to really market the conference and be able to bring other colleges into the fold. So I think with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but before I turn it over to Carl to do his commissioner report, I mean, yes.
Any questions, concerns? Do we want to wait till the end, or go ahead Salma too, if you wanted to ask?
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, I was looking at Cherry, I didn't see it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So my only concern about this is in terms of the connection to the students. So I will say that in the process of this, we do find a way to incorporate student affairs as some kind of consultant to the new commissioner or to this new structure, so that we are sure that they are aware, they have an understanding of the culture within the body of CUNY students. That's my biggest point about this.
So I will answer that two ways. Number one is we have the council of presidents, which, you know, you guys have a seat on that. And number two, within that council, the presidents sit in that council. And by connection, the vice president or whatever the titles, the different titles at the campus of student affairs are, will be represented through that, through that, through that, through that council. And obviously, the entity that we're bringing in to run the conference reports to that council, so ultimately, they will, they will have to be connected to students and make sure that that happens. And ultimately, that's really my, the main goal here. As I approach this assignment, it's really been, is how do we make our student athletes' experience at CUNY a much better experience? And obviously, the way, the path forward is by doing and creating this entity and eventually creating a separate entity that would allow us to be able to use the resources that we have on behalf of all our student athletes. So that's really.
Mr. Chair, I want to ask a thing. I was more so referring to the central office of student affairs, in addition to whatever we have already, is just that connection with at least one person from the central office. I'm not talking about control or anything, but having at least one person from the central office of student affairs have some kind of connection there.
Yes. So when Wendy Hansaw Provost has the seat, and she's designated that seat to Denise Maybach, right? So that, she's the representative on behalf of the central office. And I think the last time I checked, I'm the central office too, and I am really center on students, right? Every decision that I try to make every single day in this job, whilst I'm just doing a bunch of stuff, is to make the experience for our students a great experience. So I will, I would think that you would rely on me to be, even though I don't have that title, to be that, that voice. But I'm always a partner with Denise and making sure that the experience for our students is a great experience though.
Just so that it doesn't get lost, because it's a big change, it's enormous, and I just don't want it to get lost over time, that this is a necessity, that the conference, that the commissioner has this connection. And that's why I'm offering to have it at least written somewhere in a way that makes it fair and according to law, that there is this connection there with student affairs, that's all, I'm suggesting, but we can talk more after.
So that's, you're requesting to codify it into law, but we, into bylaws, but we don't have a bylaws.
Well, I'm not sure if there will be a contract and RFP, but.
Well, can I, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go right ahead.
So this is a, there's going to be an RFP for a commission that would oversee this. We have to be careful how we define that role. You already have in place the UAC, the University Athletics Commission. Student Affairs already has a seat in that, at that table. We want to be careful not to sacrifice the good for the perfect in that, we, the language of the RFP in the contract has to be such that the commissioner has the autonomy to run a conference without violating certain Internal Revenue Code rules as otherwise. I think students are going to be better served ultimately. Our job in the Office of General Counsel, and the Deputy General Counsel has been spearheading this with Hector's office, is to protect the university and to make sure the rights of the university are enforced. I want to say by analogy, we do this in other places around the university today. So let's take Residence Life for example. We run, we operate, we serve three dormitories across our main campuses of Queens, City College, and College of Staten Island. We subcontract out, in essence, a part, a major part of Residence Life for nearly 4,000 students. That doesn't make them completely autonomous, they're independent contractors that serve our students, that hopefully serve our students well. And to date, I think since I've been here, and I think since Hector's been here, they have, but they still have to come back to Student Affairs and the Residence Life Office of Vice Chancellor Maybank to make sure, not only are they complying with our university policies, but they're complying with their own guidelines. So they have to make sure that our students are upholding their end of the bargain while at the same time, they're delivering a quality service for residency life experience. So we're not, we're not walking away from it. Hopefully, it's going to be enhanced by their, by their role.
What, yes, go right ahead.
I have a problem hearing, but it's not only that, but it's also my hearing, but could I just ask her what, I'm sorry, could you please just clarify for me your, your question?
Okay.
If you could speak louder, I'm sorry, I can't.
My question, it's more so an add that I am suggesting, that the Office of Student Affairs has an active role, quote unquote, but I do understand the commissioner has to be independent and central can't really have control there, but making sure we have that entity that creates the connection, because I wouldn't want this to make the conference completely removed from the students. I would want to make sure there is an entity that understands the student experience and that can communicate it to the conference on a regular basis, so that they are aware of the population that they are serving.
So you want to, I'm sorry, can I ask, so you want to ensure that student participate, students are still actively, active participants in the conference?
That the student perspective is actively understood in, within this new structure.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're seeking to codify that. When we, when the, first of all, this is something that we've just started the process with, but it's going to eventually end up in a bylaws situation, probably brought, I believe brought back before this.
Well, what will be brought back to the board is a contract with the commissioner. You're already covered in the bylaws with the amendments that were done just almost a year ago.
Right, to create the council of presidents. And I think, I think the part that's getting lost here is that there is, there is this student voice in the council of presidents.
Nothing's changed.
Right, nothing's changed. And on top of that, you have the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs who sits on that. So you have two voices, and you have all your presidents of those colleges, so I, that I would think that at the forefront of every decision they make, and I'm looking at one right now, is connected to the student's experience. So I think, I think we're covered. This is, again, I think we need to separate. This is an entity that is just about running a conference, just making sure that we have referees, which has really been very difficult for our colleges to get referees, that they schedule championships, that they have, that they have the trainers, they have all the things that they need in order to run that. That's all it is. The rest of it, the structure, how they report, athletics reports in the campuses, the involvement of student affairs, that structure remains, has nothing to do with this. This is strictly about running a conference, making sure there's a schedule and all that. And that is covered through this council of presidents, who ultimately, the commissioner reports to.
As a former college athlete, I know it's hard to believe, but I appreciate it, understand what you're saying, and this is, this committee is actually the venue to raise that, so I appreciate it. And let's, let's keep speaking to central and chancellery about it, but right now, I'd like to move on to.
You have to go to the fiscal.
Thank you. Thank you gentlemen. Interim Commissioner Carl Christian, please, go right ahead.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. I think just to add to the conversation before, nothing really will change from an athletics perspective on the campus level. This will be more in terms of the coordination and oversight from a conference office perspective, in terms of managing championships and logistical planning for the conference for the season. So from a student life, from a student facing perspective, whether those student athletes on the campus, or, you know, in terms of school pride, school spirit, activities within athletics for students to attend, that really will remain in place, will, it's really more from a logistical and an operational standpoint. Obviously, I find myself in this position during this transition. At the same time, the current format that is in place is very different than what is the norm. And so certainly from that perspective, I can understand the need to kind of make some changes structurally in order to kind of get, get where we need to be. But as an advocate for our programs and for our student athletes, certainly, from a campus level perspective, they're still going to be running their programs, they're still going to be reporting on the campus level. So the conference office side of it is more enabling them to function as a group, as a league, rather than independently. I did put together a summary report, I don't know if we can pull it up, I can just run through it quickly, it'll be made available to you. If anybody has any specific questions, I'll just, I'll run through it real quick, I don't want to take any more time than is honestly needed. In terms of this, it kind of piggybacks my prior report. In terms of, you know, our athletic programs, while, you know, we face some challenges, we are having some successes, both at the senior college level and the junior college level. I highlighted a couple of lows, women's basketball player from Brew College was named ECAC Division Three Women's Player of the Year. Medgar Evers, one of our programs that is certainly, has faced some challenges and is trying to redevelop post pandemic, had success at the indoor track and field championships, won their first ever indoor championship, and actually were hosted at the Capitol in a follow-up. So that was certainly a tremendous experience for those student athletes. On the junior college side, hostess men's basketball, won the Region 15 championship. And actually, our women's basketball coach from Kingsborough Community College was named Coach of the Year at the Region 15 level. And many of you may have seen on the CUNY brief and in various media outlets, the story about Arthur Duke's men's basketball student athlete from LaGuardia. Despite all his accomplishments as a student athlete on the basketball court, this is a student that, you know, just a year ago was, was dealing with housing insecurity and many other challenges, through support from his coach and from the campus resources, was able to, you know, get the help that he needed by bringing that to their attention. At the same time, for me, the thing that resonated from this story is, this is a snapshot of a larger issue, not just for student athletes, but students in general. So that message of asking for help and using the resources that are available on campuses, I think was, was a very impactful one, from a student perspective, not necessarily an athletics one. But this is a way that athletics at times can carry things a little bit further and have a little bit more of an extended reach. While they're not in our conference, Division Two, the Queens College program had success. Men's soccer won their first conference championship, men's baseball won a conference championship, and more recently, men's tennis. So not just at, obviously, Division Three and junior college level, we're seeing competitive success at that Division Two level also. Sorry, I'm just having a problem with it. Oh, there we go. I took a snapshot in the fall, in terms of our participation and transition back post pandemic, we are seeing numbers trend back upwards. The winter was a little less than the fall, however, you know, we are seeing gains year over year. We're not quite back to our participation numbers pre-pandemic in terms of the winter sports. At the same time, we are seeing progress on the junior college side, which again, is a pipeline for the four years also. So it's important to see that participation and that trending going in the right direction. And certainly, it's important for us to monitor that, especially on the women's participation numbers. I highlighted a couple of sports where we are seeing some, some lags, and that enables us to focus efforts in that regard, and also have a larger discussion around sports sponsorship and what is most viable from a campus and from a conference perspective moving forward. You know, historically, we may have sponsored certain sports. Do those remain as attractive? Is the interest in those sports the same as it was previously? You know, on a four-year college side, Division Three, we saw over 1,600 student athletes participate on teams year-to-date, and obviously, we're not through the end of the spring season Okay. Also, we're monitoring metrics in terms of promoting awareness and making our content more accessible. From a conference championship perspective, we live streamed that, we brought that under our website before it was done via YouTube or Facebook Live, now we're streaming through our own website. We can, that way, monitor those metrics more closely, and also, it's driving more traffic and more visitors to that website, to engage them more in that regards. In addition, media rights is a thing, even at this level. There's discussions at every level, not just big time D1, in terms of the value of media rights, and that is certainly an opportunity that can be looked into further, whether it be from a conference or an institutional standpoint, as a way to generate some revenue, and again, increase visibility and awareness. And Division Three as a whole are actually exploring that possibility currently also. And at the same time, in terms of spectatorship at our championships, all of our championships are currently free to attend, that is not the same in many other conferences. At the same time, as you see, year-to-date, we're, I think, about 3,700 spectators have attended championships so far, those numbers have continued to grow post pandemic. So again, in terms of student experience and providing that accessibility to parents, family members, and, you know, students as a whole, that's an important one.
Sorry, we're just commenting how much we love the CUNY shield.
Oh, it's mixed feedback, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit, there's mixed feedback on that. It is something that potentially might be a topic of discussion during this process, so it aligns a little bit more closely with the CUNY brand, if you will. That's something that Communications has brought forward, we had a recent meeting. In terms of our role from a conference perspective in the NCAA, with President Eames' departure, President Delgado from Lehman has stepped up to serve as a representative on the Presidential Advisory Group with the NCAA. Many of our administrators and coaches do serve on NCAA committees, I'm furnishing a four-year term as part of the National Men's Soccer Committee, we have other administrators on a regional and a national level doing that. It's important that we advocate from a CUNY perspective in that forum, because our experience, our reality is very different, especially than the small private colleges and conferences. So to have that voice is critical. We actually recently got approved a NCAA internship grant, again, specifically geared towards ethnic minority and women's internship. That is something this conference had been awarded previously, that person recently transitioned to the inclusive and adaptive program, and so it's something we submitted, we were surprised and pleasantly surprised that that was approved. We are potentially looking to defer that to '25, '26, given this transition, but again, it's certainly an opportunity, and we've had a number of staff members that have come through that pathway, so it's great to, to have that on the table once more. Working closely with Student Athlete Advisory Group, their emphasis for this year was in regards to student athlete mental health. And they've partnered with a nonprofit, Morgan's Message, which is a peer-to-peer awareness advocacy group to increase awareness of the challenges of mental health for our student athletes. They've done two training sessions so far, looking to identify campus and passengers. We already have several for some of our campuses. And they also hosted an awareness event at our men's volleyball championships, again, to bring this to the fore, to encourage student athletes to have these conversations, and to, you know, get that peer leadership on the campus level. The NCAA has granted DEI funding the last two years, specifically earmarked for DEI initiatives. Some conferences nationally are using that to hire a person that fits that demographic for their conference office. In our case, we are basically taking a dual approach. One, sharing 50% of those resources directly with the campuses to use from a campus level perspective as they see fit in that regards. And then, the other percentage on a broader conference-wide initiative, whether it's having a conference campus representative attend a national or regional committee. We had a student athlete from Medgar Evers just recently attended the Student Athlete Leadership Forum, one of our John Jay coaches attended the College Sports Communicators Training Program. So again, it's utilizing those, those resources and that funding to assist professional development, to increase focus in those areas, and also work with the athletics diverse and inclusion committees to have those discussions with the athletic directors on campus as to what initiatives are the best fit for that specific campus. We have maintained our corporate sponsorships, you know, with our current sponsors, and obviously, we're always looking to identify new areas of support. In terms of working with those sponsors, we continue to get support from HSS in regards to professional development, coaches and staff, in regards to sports-specific training, first aid CPR. I've mentioned previously some of our challenges in terms of sports sponsorship, certainly certain sports, certain programs have had some challenges, so working closely with the NCAA staff to get guidance, to get direction as to how best to navigate that, and work with those campuses to see how we can best support from a conference perspective.
Now, in some, some majors, we actually give life credits if they come in with CPR and first aid, basic first aid certification. Is that something that maybe we could, it might not be under your preview, but it might be something, if they're providing coaches and student athletes of certain, who are in certain specific majors, there might be a life credit situation?
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely. And obviously, just from a health and safety standpoint, you know, we had a situation this year where we had an incident on one of our campuses, and the more people you have available.
I want as many people around me to know CPR as possible.
Yeah, the more people you have available, students, staff, the better. Actually, and, you know, in terms of professional development, van driver training, Jerry Thomas has been pivotal in, you know, supporting me and advocating for that, to have an online option for our coaches. We have a majority of part-time coaches that are transporting our student athletes to and from practice competition sites, to make that training more accessible by providing an online option. You know, I think was it, was it something we'd asked, been asked for by the campuses, and something that we were able to kind of facilitate this, this past semester. And similarly, again, in terms of technology and software, given our small staffs and some of the challenges, you know, working with central office to get those technologies vetted, approved, that way the campuses can take advantage, can opt-in if they so choose. We've had tremendous challenges with officiating payments, which in the current climate, makes it very hard for us to get and keep quality officials. So being able to streamline that process and reduce somebody administrative burden, not just on athletics, but on the business offices, is very important. So the NCAA provider is RefQuest, and that's one platform we're currently under review.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Going back to the first aid CPR, you said that the training was online?
No, not first aid CPR, that's in-person. The van driver training is, we're looking for an online option in addition to the live trainings, because many of the live trainings were offered weekdays during the day for our part-time coaches that work full-time, it was very difficult for them to, to attend, or they have to take time off work in addition to the other time they're dedicating for the compensation that they're getting.
Okay.
And same thing in terms of the technology, SPRI is one, compliance and team management software, it also has recruiting functions. Again, to use technology to store and streamline processes in terms of workflow, in terms of electronic signatures and things of that nature, whether it's student athletes completing documentation, or the flow of information across campus. If a coach leaves, that information isn't leaving with them. And also, does the ability for some of these programs to. And also, there's the ability for some of these programs to align that with admissions. So if a student fills out a prospective student-athlete form, interested in a specific team, and identifies a specific campus, a specific area of study, that information could then be shared potentially with admissions and the academic department so that it'll be recruited on multiple levels rather than from just an athletics perspective. And the same thing in terms of alumni databases and maintaining that information. And similarly, in terms of athletic training, sports medicine, having a resource at all of our campuses on the senior college side are using. But making sure that's fully vetted on a central level and then leveraging the membership to get more competitive pricing, whether it's multi-year agreements in order to stretch those dollars a little bit further. You know, I mentioned some of these challenges previously. I don't want to belabor them, but, you know, it continues to be, obviously, the level of funding and resources, especially with, you know, limited outdoor facilities at many of our campuses. Transportation costs have gone up significantly. I actually had a conversation earlier with Director Procurement, you know, from a broader perspective on that topic. But ultimately, trying to develop more conference-wide deals where we can realize more economies of scale on various levels. Transportation just being one example. Being able to identify facilities where we can, again, negotiate preferred rates from a CUNY perspective and also create a collaboration between campuses to support one another. York College will have its track and turf field come back online this coming year. It's been offline for going on fifteen years, I believe. So that's going to be a tremendous boon to have that facility back available, not just for York and the local community, but also in regards to hosting championships and potentially other competitions. I left the sports sponsorship AQ concerns, specifically the AQ concerns, which is the automatic bid to go to the NCAA postseason. We currently face challenges. Baseball, because we only have four schools that sponsor baseball. You need a minimum of six to be eligible to get that automatic bid. And then women's soccer, because a couple of our programs have struggled in terms of participation and sponsorship. And as a result, we weren't granted that AQ this past year. It is available for next year if we meet the minimums. But again, it is based upon the minimum criteria established by the NCAA. And, you know, again, we continue to work with those campuses to identify how they can stabilize those programs and rebuild participation. Just a little plug for our awards banquet, which is coming up in about a month. We've rolled in the basketball luncheon into the Scholar-Athlete Awards banquet and basically encompassed all of the sports in terms of recognizing the major award winners across all sports rather than doing the basketball luncheon that really just highlights one sport and then the Scholar-Athlete event. So that way, again, we're being more inclusive, there's greater equity in that regards. And at the same time, we're maintaining the integrity of the event to focus on those Scholar-Athlete award winners. And we also recognize our All-Americans and our Commissioners Cup winners. And it's an opportunity for us to also engage with our corporate sponsors to, again, cultivate that relationship. And that pretty much summarizes my updates at this point, outside of that larger discussion previous one.
Is there a breakdown on how the eighty to eighty-eight thousand dollars from the USS have been used throughout this process?
How?
The sponsorship by the USS, the University Student Senate. Is there a breakdown on how this was used here?
Where the funds are allocated?
Kind of what it was used for briefly?
Yep, yep. I can certainly provide some feedback in that regards. That I have, since this transition, provided, I think, greater transparency in terms of the breakdown and allocation of funding for the campuses, for the council, and certainly in terms of breaking it down, not just in terms of by area, whether it's championships, professional development, equipment, but also in terms of by event, you know, what's allocated to each specific championship for both the four-year and the two-year schools. Because quite frankly, the junior college would be wondering where their dues were going and exactly where they were seeing the value for that. So being able to quantify that, I think, is helpful to people see just... The conference office, quite frankly, one area has probably been very well regarded is in terms of its execution of championships. It's far greater than many other conferences. A lot of that generally falls on the campus level. And the conference office pretty much is just providing the T-shirts, the caps, the signage, and the awards rather than, this office pretty much previously has ran the show with the support of the campus. So that's something that's likely to change to a degree. The scope and scale of some of the championships moving forward, again, to be determined. At the same time, as I say, I felt it was important to really kind of demonstrate where that money was being allocated and to have discussions as to areas where, whether the athletic directors or presidents felt, there should be greater emphasis. And quite frankly, trying to realize more economists and make us more efficient. There was a couple of things we were doing that weren't industry standard, you know, weren't best practices, if you will, in terms of the level of expenses allocated. So we made some adjustments there so those could be reallocated elsewhere.
Thank you. It's your chancellor question.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. If there's no more questions, I'm going to move on to one of my favorite parts and a very important topic. We're going to hear from reflections from students through the Foster Youth College Success Initiative. I'd like to invite Vice Chancellor Maybank to introduce the students that we're going to hear from.
So this evening, we have the privilege of hearing from two of our students
Please join us on the table.
who have a history in foster care. And I have the privilege of introducing to you our stars for today. Adi Osorio from John Jay College of Criminal Justice, who is a forensic psychology major with a minor in counseling. And she is a junior transitioning into senior status. I heard this story in the hallway, so I wouldn't dare talk about that without mentioning it. And Caleb Truesdale, am I saying it right?
Truesdale, yes.
Truesdale, from Baruch College, who is a biology senior, who is planning to be able to take care of my heart and my veins and all of that stuff at some point along the way. But we're going to hear from them, and then I'll introduce Dr. Shirley DePena, who is responsible for the program. So, Adi?
I'll start. So, hi, everyone. My name is Adi, as Denise, I call her Denise, has mentioned. I am a John Jay student. I'm pursuing my bachelor's degree in forensic psychology with a minor in counseling. Super psyched about that. At John Jay, I wanted to just talk about, like, just a bit about what I, I guess, value about John Jay itself. And I wanted to start off by saying that at John Jay, student engagement extends far beyond the classroom. Our vibrant student life enriched by student organizations offers not just activities, but opportunities for leadership and personal development. For me personally, being involved in groups and such groups has been transformative. It is there that I've honed my professional skills, foster lasting friendships, and engage in initiatives to fuel my passion for justice and learning. I am immensely grateful. I would admit, I am a bit of a nerd in terms of my academics. So I spend a lot of my time at the library or at the Writing Center at John Jay, among other various learning centers. And as a student who deeply engages, I have access to the library that caters, you know, specifically to my interests, among other students, but, I don't know, it's mine, kind of. And my interests lie within psychology, of course, literature, I'm a big reader, and education. And that, and the library significantly helped me in my academic pursuits. These learning centers with their supportive environment have been instrumental in helping me and others enhance our understanding of complex subjects while also ensuring we excel academically. But at John Jay, academics, you know, it doesn't end there. It doesn't just end with academics. The college's commitment to our well-being is evident through comprehensive services, like the Student Immigration Center, the Service Office. These services ensure that all students, regardless of their needs, have the support required to thrive. For me, this holistic approach has created a nurturing environment that empowers me to face my academic and personal challenges with confidence. Moreover, the financial support through scholarships and grants has been a crucial factor in my ability to pursue higher education. By John Jay partnering with state programs like Foster Youth Scholarship Programs like the McCulley Honors Program. The McCulley Honors College has not only alleviated my financial burdens, but has also enriched my academic experiences with exclusive opportunities for networking and socializing. This financial aid is more than just monetary support. It is peace of mind that allows me to focus on my studies, my future career, without the looming worry of financial constraints. Just supported, have not just supported my academic journey, they in fact have transformed it. They have prepared me not to just be a student, but a leader, a thinker, and an advocate for justice. I am immensely grateful for the support system at John Jay. So my hope is that these services continue to expand and nurture inspiring generations of students to come. Thank you for your attention and your continued support for CUNY students.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Caleb Truesdale. Thank you for the gracious introduction, Denise. It's great to see all these beautiful faces for the first time. So, yeah, again, Caleb Truesdale, majoring in biology, minor in psych. I've actually had a chance to be a part of a committee such as this. I was a part of a Baruch Student Government as a representative senator. So a lot of outreach, a lot of public speaking. It's something that I've definitely had a lot of time to kind of work on. One of the biggest things, and I think the biggest takeaways from FYCSI and how the program has come to help me, as Adi mentioned, it's kind of given, kind of like a solid basis to allow me to, you know, I want to say, be able to take advantage of some resources at my school, whether it be academic, social, the financial backing has been amazing. That's allowed me to be able to put focus into studies. As I mentioned, I'm working very hard towards that medical school goal and dream. And it's a long road, but without this program, I, it would have been a lot tougher. That is an honest-to-god fact. Shirley's done an amazing job sticking with me these past four, almost going on four and a half years, four and a half years, sorry. Yeah, I feel like I'm getting old. I'm about to graduate in May.
It gets worse.
Yeah, oh, God, don't say that. My knees going out, back going out. Catching myself going to bed at ten P.M. But, you know, like I said, all in all, you know, we've had amazing resources allotted to us. For example, student interns that have followed us throughout our college career in FYCSI, checking on us monthly, making sure that we have the proper resources to succeed. And, yeah, I just, I can't thank the program enough. And, you know, I'm hoping, again, as Adi mentioned, that resources are expanded so a number of students can kind of tap in with this. You know, it's funny how, you know, not many students know about this program. When I joined student government, I tried to be a voice and let a number of students know that this is a resource. If you've been in foster care, whatever it may be, this is something that can help you succeed in your time at, whether it's Baruch, Queens College, I've, this is not to be, I've definitely convinced some Queens College students to come over to Baruch, and they've made the switch. So I've had, I've had an experience, I've had experience in talking to a number of students from a variety of schools. I was also the vice president for the Biomed Society. So that's how kind of that happened. And that came about was, and that experience in itself allowed me to speak to, you know, an array of individuals from an array of backgrounds and, again, students who've been in foster care. So I've gotten, again, to kind of push this, the FYCSI agenda. And, you know, they've made my experience at Baruch what it is. So I'd like to, again, thank Shirley, thank Denise, and thank you for your time.
Well, Dr. DePena, I don't think you could have a better introduction, so.
I hope I can live up to it. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you. So I also put together a brief PowerPoint to just talk about the program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about, I don't know if I'm doing this right. I'm not. Oh, there it is. Is it, okay? It's, okay, got it. So FYCSI, the acronym for the Foster Youth College Success Initiative, it's a New York State grant-funded program. It's been at CUNY, it's actually been in existence since FY16. And it's a program for current and former foster youth and also orphans who attend CUNY, SUNY, or a private college in New York State. And what the purpose of the program is really to provide resources and support to students who have a history in the foster care system or who are orphans to succeed. The rates of graduation were low, and so we really wanted to provide resources to students that we knew could do well, could be successful, like Caleb and like Adi, who just needed a little bit, a little bit more of a push. So our, the resources, the funding in the program can be used to support students financially, to provide support academically, just to raise those rates of graduation and retention. I just have here some numbers in terms of our enrollment for this. Currently, we have three-hundred-and-ninety-six students enrolled for Spring 2024 across our nineteen undergraduate campuses. We only support students up to the undergraduate degree, and that is the largest class we've had since the program started in FY16. Most of our students are at community colleges, and then some are at senior, with a few also at the comprehensive colleges. So just a quick, you know, what's an eligible student? So any student who has spent any time in foster care after their thirteenth birthday are eligible for this program. And we also support students who are in foster care in other states as long as they're currently attending a CUNY, SUNY, or a private school in New York State. This also includes students who aged out of foster care, who left foster care after thirteen and were reunited with their parents, also students who were adopted but were in foster care after thirteen. We are able to support undocumented students as well with this program. And we're able to support orphans. So students whose parents are deceased and after salud and who became orphaned after the age of thirteen. And so the New York State Education Department provides the funding to the sectors, but it really allows the sectors to plan their own program. And so at CUNY, we have a centralized program because we're all in New York City. This year, our funding was two-point-six-seven million dollars to support our students. And what we've really thought to do, because we understand that our students come in with a lot of, with need, outside of financial need. We know that students need funding and need money in order to pursue that degree. We also understand that students need in order to pursue that degree. We also understand that students need also comprehensive support. So we've created a program that is designed to support students in a holistic manner. And so what we do is Caleb mentioned our interns. We bring on masters of social work interns. We currently have twelve this year from Silverman, so we support CUNY all day. So Silverman students are assigned to our students.
Does that meet their clinician?
It does meet their, it does meet their hours. So they, we provide the clinical supervision. They have a caseload of students. And as Caleb said, they check in with our students. We understand that, again, in order to graduate, sometimes you need somebody to talk to. Sometimes you just need somebody to say, hey, I got an A, or, oh, I got an F, and what do I do? So we really want our students to, our social work interns, to check in with our students, make sure everything's okay, and if there's any way that we can better support them. We want them to connect them to resources, on-campus, off-campus resources. So we call that first service Individualized Intensive Case Management. Our students are unique, and each and every one of them need something uniquely to them. And so our social work interns are matched with our students and provide the support that that individual student needs and thinks and believes that they need in order to get ahead. We, the social work interns, also make sure that our students are getting the academic support that they need, the services that Adi mentioned. We make sure that students are connected to those services, because CUNY does have a number of services that really do support students, and we want to make sure our students know about that. We want to make sure our students are getting academic advisement, and they're going, and they're getting that kind of support in that way. We also provide community and leadership building. We do workshops. We were just talking about in-person. I think they're ready to come back in person and do some get-togethers and connect. And so we will continue to do some virtual connections, but also some in-person, and students can decide how they want to connect with others. And then the financial support. We do provide students with stipends to cover textbooks, transportation, computers, equipment. We provide students funding to cover tuition, including past due balances. Sometimes that is a barrier for a lot of our students. We provide, in terms of tuition, we also cover winter housing and summer house, winter and summer tuition. And we cover students with on-campus housing. So if a student is in need of housing, they can reside at one of our three residence life halls, and we cover a hundred percent of the cost of the housing for the student until they get their bachelor's degree or, you know, sooner, you know, sooner if they need it. And our social work interns will then work with them to make sure that when they transition out, you know, and they're graduating and they need, we will help connect them to resources so that they have someplace to go after the dorm. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Start by thanking you, Dr. DePena. Is there anything, Caleb was saying that we, you know, he was trying to get the word out, is there anything we can be doing at Central to promote this to the foster care?
Absolutely. I think the more that we talk about it, the more that we know about it and say that there is a program here to support our students. A lot of our students, you know, we're catching a lot of our students, but the only way that we can identify students, the biggest way is through the FAFSA, where they answer the foster care question. There is a question on the FAFSA that asks that question. But in talking to some students, I've actually heard some students say that they don't want to answer affirmative, because they don't know what happens if I press that button. And so the tap application does trigger the application for the FYCSI program if they answer in the affirmative. So the more that we talk about the program, that there are supports to students, that we want to try to individualize the supports as much as possible so that they get what they need. I think that would be amazing to be able to do that.
Excellent. And thank you for your amazing work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is always my favorite section, and Vice Chancellor Maybank always brings us really impressive people. And Edie and Caleb, let me just say to you, you might have had a rough start, but it's about the journey and where you end up, not about where you started.
So I have a quote for that.
Of course. Not to be subsumed by Vice Chancellor Maybank, who I was just about to introduce.
We delight in the beauty of the butterfly, but rarely acknowledge the changes it goes through to attain that beauty.
Well, thank you again. And Vice Chancellor Maybank, do you have a report in addition to that?
I'm not going to make a formal report because of the length of the meeting, the time, but I did want to, I do choose to acknowledge the action that began last week on the City College campus. The demonstrators include students, faculty, and staff from across CUNY, as well as others not directly affiliated with CUNY campuses. We respect the right to free speech and acknowledge that with this right comes responsibility. Our main focus is and will remain on the health and safety of our students and campus community. We are working to minimize risk to people within the encampment and to protect all members of our community while maintaining campus operations. And we believe all of this is doable.
Thank you, and I'm sure the committee will echo your comments. I know I certainly do. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just, this is also my favorite part, and I just want to thank the two students for just making the time to come and present to us. And so looking forward to your trajectory, you know, Edie, both you and your accolades, and I hope that you, you know, can be an inspiration to others and make time to make that connection, because you're super inspiring, as well as Caleb, you know, I wish you the best with your knees and your back.
Those aging things.
Yeah.
It's omnipresent.
But thank you for your advocacy across the students, and we're going to be so excited to share this information. So thank you so much for this time.
Yes, President DeFilippas.
I look at these students, and I see the future, and I'm hopeful. So thank you so much. And thank you, Director DePena, for your great work, wonderful. And of course, the Vice Chancellor. I just love her. I mean, she is one of the poets among us.
Well, if there, are there any other questions or comments, concerns from the committee? Thank you very much, everyone. I will now move to the items requiring a vote today by this committee. Action, Action Item Two A is the approval of minutes of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. I move the approval of Action Item Two A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Action, Action Item Two B, the Policy Calendar. Item Two B one is the resolution to approve the award of the Jonas Salk Scholarships. For those of you who don't know, Jonas Salk was a CUNY professor and cure polio. So I call on Vice Chancellor Maybank to provide more information on this item.
So since nineteen fifty-five, the City University of New York has presented the Jonas E. Salk Award to outstanding students who plan careers in medicine and the biological sciences. These students are selected on the basis of original research papers undertaken with mentors who are prominent scientists across our university. The awards are given to students in recognition of high ability and scholarship and judged likely to make significant contributions to medicine and medical research. A Salk Scholar receives one of the most prestigious awards bestowed upon a graduate of the City University of New York. This year, I'm proud to announce the eight recipients of the twenty twenty-four Jonas E. Salk Scholarship. Ian Carrada from Queens College, Jalen Crespo from City College, Fablia Hussein from City College, Seda, I may be saying, I may be pronouncing her name wrong, Seda Janith from Hunter College, Alexis Middleman from McCulley honors College and Hunter College, Masataka Mizunu from Brooklyn College, Ikine Anwu Biko from City College, and Pooja Suganthan from McCulley honors College and Hunter College. Those are our eight Salk recipients.
I move to the approval of Policy Item Two B one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Just checking to make sure I didn't screw up. Okay. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.